Welcome, everyone. Welcome, Board members. Mr. Steppik, would you take attendance, please?
Certain. President Donald.
Here.
Vice President Brazing.
Here.
Secretary Steppik, here. Treasurer Guthrie.
Here.
Trustee Bailey?
Not.
Trustee Delisandro?
Here.
Trustee Schaefer?
Here.
Very good. Any changes to the board agenda?
None.
So then we move on to number three, our consent agenda. We've got the minutes for February, bills payable. We have a motion.
Dan.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there support? Support, support. Jenny? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Prearranged request to address the board, any other than the international program?
Nope.
International program.
Prearranged request to address the board, any other than the international program?
Nope.
International program.
This is Chin Chin Tan. We just wanted to give you a quick update of some of the programming changes we've gone through this year and just some quick information for you.
Good evening. Chin and I are very excited to have this opportunity to share with all of you a brief update on our program this year. As some of you may have been well aware, we are approaching the direction of our international program in a reformed manner, by meaning that we're looking at diverse ways to expand our global partnership presence. First and foremost, we are looking at emphasizing the role that an online learning experience can play in proactively preparing these non-native English speakers before they step foot at Oxford High School so that they're more ready academically and also with their English proficiency. I'm going to turn it over to Jill to share a little bit more insight about that.
So at one of the last board meetings, I spoke about working closely with the OVA staff. Janet and her team have been just fantastic in coming up with some very proactive ways, like Chin Chin mentioned, to get those students prepared to come to the United States and selecting the coursework that would be necessary and most advantageous for them to take before they come here. And so it's kind of tiny for you to look now, but economics course happens to be one of the mandatory courses for graduation. Most of our students have not had the same version that we offer. Also, US history and then different college preparation courses, like SAT and ACT prep are really big sellers abroad to try and get students ready for college placement testing when they come here. Thank you. So if you look in year one, we suggested that they get a personalized elective, something to get them excited about online learning. It's something that had a high interest level, as well as an English course and econ course. Then in year two, we would suggest US history. Your English proficiency is up a little bit. And again, continue taking an English language arts course. And in year three, really go towards the college readiness and look at college preparation coursework, as well as yet another English course. We really wanted to make sure and continue to be committed to having our students have four solid years of language arts to graduate. And then in their fourth final year of high school, they could either choose to come to America seated, and we do have one of our students here today to speak with you who happens to be a senior with us, or they may choose to stay in the virtual environment and approach an Oxford diploma virtually through the VIP, Virtual International Program. Or they could, at any point, just opt into their own home country system for a home country diploma. So we're noticing that the more countries that we explore, they're not always necessarily interested in an American diploma. That might not be the goal for everyone. In Mexico, for example, it's free to go to their universities or at least at a very discounted rate, so they want to prepare for that system, as an example. These are just some of our admission requirements. Again, I talked through most of this, but we would have suggested a ninth grade enroll in at least two credit-earning VIP courses with us to get acclimated. Then once in 10th grade, another two courses earning a total of four credits. And then in 11th grade, kind of ramp up and start using our dedicated counselor to get ready for college with us. Another graphic that we created. And then I just wanted to share with you this video. Matt Johnson has been really helpful in finding this particular vendor to create this video. It's real quick and I hope you'll enjoy it. This is for, we're launching right now in Brazil and I think Chin Chin is going to talk about that, with virtual in the forefront. So typically, we say, "We've got this awesome high school. We want you to come here." And by the way, if you can't, we get virtual. In Brazil in particular, because of some visa issues, they have a hard time coming here. So we flipped the script and we said, "We do have this awesome high school, but you may not choose to come here. Let's really focus on the virtual experience." And that is what this video was meant for.
This is Anna. She's a high school student in Brazil, but she's always dreamed of going to school in the United States. Unfortunately, studying abroad is expensive. Plus, Anna doesn't want to leave her friends and family behind. That's why we at Oxford Community Schools have decided to bring a first-class American education right to Anna's front door. The Virtual International Program, or VIP, allows students like Anna to receive a high school diploma from Oxford, a world-class Ivy authorized school district in the US. Anna can choose from over 400 engaging courses and access them anytime, anyplace, at any pace. She can even connect with classmates all around the globe in her virtual classroom. As the VIP student, Anna is assigned both a mentor and a certified teacher that will succeed. She has an individualized academic plan with personalized course options that could include SAT or ACT preparation and ESL courses for all levels of English learners. Anna's experienced counselor even guides her through the entire college application process and helps her gain acceptance to an American university so she can choose exactly where to start her post-secondary education. No matter where you call home, you deserve the best education possible. You deserve the VIP experience. To learn more, call or email us today or visit us online at oxfordschools.org.
So you know, that was a joint marketing effort. There's going to be a similar video with the same branding and with the same, it's actually a female voice for the OVA side of the house. So we were able to work together with Matt, come up with a joint marketing through the strawshop.com.
The virtual initiatives that we have implemented in place are value-added to the international program that we have had over the past several years. We still play critical emphasis on our standard admission process, meaning that we would review applications from these international candidates during their 11th grade year with the purpose of accepting them as a senior so that they would graduate with an Oxford high school diploma should they meet all graduation requirements, the 26 credits. And we do have a senior with us here today, hopefully two. The other one is on their way from college interview. So they will be able to give you a little bit of personal take on the experiences they've had here at Oxford. We continue to provide layers of support so that our international candidates can be well-supported to achieve, accomplish their goal. And our dedicated counselor, Mrs. Kestrel, has done an excellent job. And that is best demonstrated, in our opinion, by the college acceptances we have had up to date. As you are well aware, March and April are peak season for college acceptances. So we hope to have more good news to share with you in the very near future. Many of our students, as you can see, have elected to go on to colleges in Michigan. They do consider Michigan and Oxford their home away from home. So with the virtual initiatives being implemented as a concentrated direction or new direction for the international program, we're also intentionally diversifying our partnerships overseas. In India, all these schools that you are seeing here, they are new as of this year. I was very fortunate to be joined by Mr. Kurt News during our visitation to India this past November. All of these schools that are listed here are relatively familiar with the concept or the implementation of an online learning experience. They, almost all of them, have, are equipped with functioning computer labs. So that is a big advantage. In Brazil, Jill, with the support of our OVA leadership and also through the local in-country presence of our own Department of Commerce, has expanded the marketing research initiatives efforts there. Mexico, we're continuing to sustain our strong, several-year-long relationship there. We are looking at sending another group of our high school students over to Pablo as soon as after commencement, after graduation. And these new names of partnerships, they are seeing based in China. The common thread, again, is that all of these schools have embedded virtual learning programming in place. So we're hoping that these students can be proactively prepared through enrolling in an online Oxford learning experience before setting foot at Oxford High School. And last but not least, we're continuing to collaborate with third-party youth exchange agencies, typically Youth for Understanding, Rotary, just so that we could have a more diverse representation of countries and nationalities. Finally, we want to share the stage with the highlights of our program, which are our students. Both of them are here. So one of them just made it back from Waterford. So Rajat Kadian and Venam Araya, they're both seniors with us. And they're also joined here by their host parents, Jim and Dawn. Thank you very much. Who would like to go first? Rajat recently did a TEDx talk here at Oxford, so he's a little bit more seasoned with public speaking.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Rajat Kadian and I'm an Indian exchange student. So whether my experience at Oxford High School has been good or not, it's evident from the fact that I'm standing here with a smile. I think, you know, the risk has evidently paid off coming to Oxford High School because out here, learning is more like an enjoyment. Or basically, education is more like an enjoyment. I can learn what I want to learn and what I am passionate about learning. So there are no hard and fast rules, like you have to have to do it as long as you want to pass the class and want to go in a good college. It's something different out here. You pursue your interest, chalk out your interest and make it as your, in a major or a minor, what you want to pursue in your college and stuff. I think the US history and US civics classes have helped me a lot. It has been, you know, very intellectually designed by the counselors that international students must go through these courses because after taking those classes, I think I've come to know America much more better in federal system, in economic system, and in social and cultural system. So those classes have actually kind of helped me in grooming myself, becoming a legal alien, as they call. Thank you for that chuckle. Apart from that, I was, in the beginning, concerned that how would I be able to acclimatize with the host parents and, you know, the society as a whole. But I think after coming out here, you know, people at Oxford, they have very large hearts and with the same, you know, passion, they extend their arms and welcome you with grace and dignity. So I've always felt that my host parents are like parents away from parents and my host home is like a home away from home. So I never felt like a legal alien, but an American by heart, although not by birth, but by heart. And I've, you know, taking all these opportunities, like as Mrs. Tang said, that TEDx and other public speaking events, it's like a new challenge. And a new challenge means a new learning. So coming here, it's like a new level of learning for me, a new level of understanding for me, which I've always ran after, I've always seen these things. So I think the Oxford International Program is doing a really good job, as is evident from the fact that I'm standing here, it's finally reiterated the fact. So it must be continued and it must spread its wings and its influence and impact in other countries so that other willing and heartily willing students like me can pursue their learnings in whatever field they want to. Thank you.
This is Venam Araya.
Hello, everyone. So Oxford International Program has given us an opportunity that people can only dream of. Coming to US in 12th grade, getting to know the culture here is an amazing opportunity. We actually get to know both cultures, pick the best from both of them and combine them together, which I think is truly amazing. Moreover, in India, economically speaking, the emphasis is more on theoretical knowledge. We just scramble books, give our exams, and we are done with it. But in US, there's much more emphasis on the practical application, which I think is much more necessary because we get to know what we are doing and how to implement it in practical world. So that's what I believe is one of the great experiences to actually go through with. And as Rajat touched upon, the experience other than school, at our home, with our host family, is another amazing experience. I'm telling you, like, when we were going through the screening process, when Mr. Throne came to India and selected us, the only question in my mind was, "How am I going to cope up there? How my host family is going to be?" But they are, they are much better than I could ever have dreamed of. I'm telling you, like, both of us are vegetarians, okay? So everyone in India were like, "How are you going to manage there? What are you going to eat?" And believe me, my host mother, she cooks Indian food for us. And that's truly amazing.
Not very well.
Very well. Thank you.
Thank you, Rajat. Thank you, Venam Araya. As you can see, their command of the English language never ceases to amaze. I would like now to open up for any questions or comments, if you have any. Thank you.
Dan. Everything that you've presented, the VIP program, that's all tuition-based, correct?
Absolutely.
So that fourth year, if they choose to come here, that is also tuition-based? I wanted to be sure that, since they're doing it virtually, online, through our school district, we don't run into any of the issues that were changed or that came up midway through our previous program where it was a one-year, they're just here for one year, even though they're taking classes with us virtually?
Correct. Yeah, so this is all tuition-based, it's not FTE-based. And so I think that, a couple of big points. One, obviously, a lot more virtual components than before. A second differentiation would be that if a student chooses to come here and study, it's still only a one-year program and it's in their senior year. It's just with more virtual opportunities wrapped around that. And as Jill pointed out, what we're finding is in some countries, while the physical, coming here physically for one year is an option, in some countries, we may not find that any students take advantage of that. They just want to be able to take our courses virtually and get a virtual diploma, so.
No, please, go ahead. Can you give us an understanding, when we first started the international program, we were somewhere close to 100 students. Where are we now with student enrollment?
So when we first started the program, our first year, we actually hit nine. So it was a humble start. We got up to about, somewhere in the higher 90s in our peak. And I think we heard from the community that that was too many to be blunt. And that it was just, it was changing the culture of Oxford a little bit because we were having pockets of students who were not interacting with American students and none of it through any fault of their own. So we made a conscious decision to dial back. As Tim said, one of the reasons was because of, or as you mentioned, because of the visa situation. We don't want to touch anything that's even remotely sticky with the federal visa laws. So we are completely stopping all programs at 12 months or in most cases, nine academic months. That's one of the reasons. Another thing is that we wanted to back up and look at what countries we were partnering with and get more diversity. And so as Chin Chin showed you all the different new schools that we're working with, we're taking a year this year to sort of grow the program and, you know, try and plant some seeds in some new countries and some new places. And we're excited to welcome our first group of Indian students. Our understanding is that the next group of Indian students will be larger because they've heard fantastic things from these boys who have been our greatest ambassadors abroad. So right now, we're looking at a pretty modest number of students, but I think that was intentional.
Another factor to note is that at one point, we considered the idea of having an international student dormitory being built in the proximity of our school property since that's history now. We are dependent on the host family capacity that our community can provide. And that is, in my opinion, a blessing disguised as we do want to intentionally look at right sizing the international program when it comes to seating enrollment so that it is a value-added to the rural culture of the Oxford High School rather than distraction. I apologize for neglecting to mention that Mr. Barna also joined me in China as we ventured into these new partners. So he did a fantastic job.
Can you give us a sense of, like, revenues versus expenses? Like, how much are we spending on the VIP program right now? How much money are we bringing in?
So virtually, I think we've only had a few students take advantage of courses. So this fiscal year, very little revenue from the virtual standpoint. We're looking to obviously grow that next year. I've asked Sam, I wanted to go back in history. And every year, obviously, our goal is to have our revenues exceed any expenses that we have. And we've always been in the black. And so those revenues, those, I'll say, profits are reinvested back into existing programs. And our goal is to continue that exact numbers. Yeah, have our overall revenue numbers went down because our student numbers have went down? Yes. But are we still generating positive numbers and putting that money back into existing programs or growing new programs? Yes. I just don't have those numbers.
Maybe next time they can just give a detailed report, that'd be great.
In fact, maybe when we have our budget workshop, we can go in depth, not only for this year, but the last two or three years.
Treasurer.
Thank you. Can you guys talk a little bit about any staffing needs, issues, pain points, pressure points? Any additional staffing that needs to happen with this program? Just give me a little bit of a picture of how that's going.
Honestly, I think that we're doing great this year. And I think the students kind of touched on that, that they have Mrs. Kestrel to work with. She's working part-time this year and with a fewer number of students at work. If we do grow substantially for the fall, we may need to increase her hours. I can imagine a scenario where she does, you know, kind of does back up to maybe 75% or even full-time again. I'm not sure. I don't know if you got a term, Tim. But that's some support system that we need to keep in place because she is just exceptional and these students go to her, you know, multiple times a day, before and after school and by text. So, but besides that, with regard to like, I think you're probably thinking about like tutorial assistance and things like that.
And OVA even as well, like, do we have a big product?
So the OVA staff right now, it's substantial. We've been able to fit the few students who are taking advantage of the Virtual International Program into the OVA classes. If it became more of a burden or more of an issue, we've talked about having stipend teachers working outside of the school day to work with our international students, sort of outside of, like, keeping it very separate from the Oxford virtual students so that they have those supportive teachers who maybe have a background in English language learning or have experience in those different platforms that operate ESL courses online.
Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Esau, go ahead. I want to thank Tim, first and foremost, who's the one that starts up from the top and works its way down. Having been through this process from the very beginning, the ups and flows of how we started and then in the middle and where we are now, I think we've come to the point where, as Chin Chin said earlier, we're right sizing the program. We're seeing what fits. We're seeing what our community's capacity for this program is. To the two of you, you've got not just great host families, they're just great people. And it reflects on you two, Jim and Dawn.
No, I got a great you too.
It just shows, when we have a student come up here and tell us that the people of Oxford have opened their hearts and have been very welcoming to them, it makes me feel good that I think we're on the right course here. So thank you for your hard work. I know it hasn't been easy. So we can never thank you enough, Tim and everybody else in the program, for everything that you've done to kind of unwind where we were before and kind of push where we're going now, so.
Jill and Chin Chin, thank you very much. Item five, Board of Education Matters, Lighthouse Connection Academy contract.
Yes, thank you. Really, the only thing that I want to just reiterate with the board is just a few key points. I know that there was a lot of information and documentation in the pack this week. But, you know, the big things, yeah. The big things are that, you know, it's a 3% off ariser fee. It's a five-year contract. We required that the Lighthouse Board do a self-assessment with the AINACOL standards. And I think just in looking back, our overall goal with this initial contract was to try and find best-of-breed gold standard from across the board, whether that's information we've learned through legal counsel, through other charters, or through other authorizers at the university level. We really tried to incorporate the best that we could find into not only our policies, but our contract and just how we go about doing that. So that's really all I want to say in regards to that. And in regards to the self-evaluation, again, this was something that we asked them to perform. It's nothing we performed, but we felt it was important for them to take this step. And yeah, as we go forward, I'm sure there will be additional things that we learn along the way. But we feel confident that this is our best look forward at this time.
All right, very good, very good. So you see below, we have a...
Mr. President?
Yes, sir. Sure, unless you want to get a motion. Is it part of the discussion for the motion? Should we put a motion in a second on the table or else the discussion is not necessary?
Either way, it doesn't matter.
All right, so let's do it, let's get a motion on the table. Dan?
Move to approve the issuance of charter school contract to Lighthouse Connections Academy to operate as a 6D school of excellence, which is a cyber charter school.
Is there support? Mr. Steppik? Now discussion. Mr. Steppik?
Thank you. I was just curious, Mr. Throne, who do we get to thank for all of the wonderful readings that we had?
Well, I would love to take credit, but for the most part, Jill has been spending a tremendous amount of time helping put this together, and so I think you're thanked.
Let me refine my question. Was it our attorneys that put this together?
Was it our attorneys that put this together, a lot of the bylaws and the, the contract and the things like that? Or was it Connections people?
Oh, no, it, it was ours.
Okay.
Definitely. With obviously a ton of input and research.
Understood, I just, was curious where that came from, where the, where the drafters were.
So I think what Mark's asking is, is who's buying the grocery for the soup? And it sounds like our con, our soup was put together by our attorneys, correct?
Yes.
Any other comments, questions? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. There's a secondary motion underneath that one. Would someone like to have it?
Move to approve the method of selection and appointment of directors of Lighthouse Connections Academy.
Is there support? Discussion. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Mr. Weaver, curriculum and instruction? Whoa, whoa. Wow. We appreciate it, we appreciate it.
I'll be back May for weather purposes.
Mr. Barna, finances and operations.
Good evening. So tonight I just have a bond authorizing resolution for the sale of our first series of 2018 bonds. And so we're selling, you know, upon board approval in June, nine point four one five million in the first series. And so this resolution just gives us that opportunity. We have selected Stiefel Nicholas as our underwriting firm. Stiefel is, is based out of the Lansing area. And so they have actually been in the district several times before and have been doing refunding bonds for us as well as sale of new, new issues as well. So we look forward to this and that's what this resolution is all about for series one.
When's that date, Sam?
It's actually going to be in early June is the actual sale of the bonds. And the proceeds will then follow suit afterwards.
So does that mean there's plans for getting things going this summer? Is that the reason?
You know, there's actually, we're, we're putting out actually design work. Started actually in March with IDS, looking at the mechanical units and what have you to do the air conditioning. And so the majority of the construction actually won't start until the summer of nineteen, because we have to bid everything out. What is being purchased primarily this summer, primarily are the buses, the twelve buses?
But they like put that order time in already, right?
I'm sorry?
Aren't they going to put that order in?
Yeah, we actually already worked them from the state website, competitive bidding website. It's just that we won't pay for them technically until after we receive them.
Sam, I noticed there's a number of places where some signatures are needed. And I, I think Mark and I have to do some signing.
That's true.
When do you expect that to?
Uh, next, next week at the board meeting. So I'll take this for a formal resolution.
Got it, got it, okay.
So if you have any questions, please feel free either tonight or through the course of the next week to reach out to Mr. Throne or myself. And I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
So we'll address it next Tuesday, right?
Yes.
Okay, cool, very good. Any comments or questions? All right. Human resources.
All right, well, it's interview season, so we're breaking up and getting busy there. And Sam had not mentioned that he and I have been going around the district kind of reviewing safety procedures, safety, you know, in this building, what kinds of things we need to look at. So we are also going to, Sam sent a contract in for Alex training for all of our employees. So we will be putting that in place very shortly.
Very good. Student services.
Is Maya over there?
We're busy, busy.
Our line item ten, unscheduled audience participation. By the way, do you have, it looks like there might be someone or some people who might want to talk. If you have this, there is a bit of a description of how we process that participation. So take a glance at that and look at that.
Do you want to just go ahead and read it? Because I don't know if everybody has it.
Sure. Individuals are welcome to speak for five minutes during this public participation section of the agenda. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer, I guess that would be me. No person may address or question board members or the superintendent individually. In order to speak to the board, individual, individuals must fill out a three-by-five card with their names, address, and phone number before they make their statements. And the superintendent will be responsible for any follow-up with the individuals that have questions and/or set up a meeting if necessary. So this is a time when we want the community to be able to talk about whatever it is they need to talk about. So, anyone?
Somebody moved the fill-out card.
What's that?
Somebody moved the fill-out card.
Okay, all right. While that's all, working board members, looking at the schedule, want to remind you that the meeting that we do have next Tuesday starts at six.
Yep.
So it's a half hour earlier. That is pointing that out.
And it's at the A.
Pardon me?
And it's at the A.
And it's at the A.
Turn my clock. Half hour four.
Anybody here excited about spring break? Kurt, do you have a couple completed cards that we can begin with? Okay. Oh, I see. All right, the Vanacars. I think I may have met you, you may have shaken your hand when I heard you there. The Vanacars? No, maybe I didn't. But the Vanacars come down. How about mom and dad? And then we'll have, because others have said they'd like them to talk first. So let's have the, the parents come down. The Vanacars? Jean and Rick?
Do the parents have to? I mean, really, Leah should speak first.
You can.
Oh, I, I, what I, the indication that I heard was you wanted to speak first and then others wanted to speak after. Is that not the case? I'm just trying to follow what...
We did not ask this.
So are you Leah?
Yes.
Leah, come on up.
Do I have to speak, man?
Who would like, who would like to speak first? I, 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 okay. So Leah, here's a microphone. If you would, um, what, what you're going to kind of do is stand back there, kind of face us because you're kind of directing us. And as you know, you've got five minutes. And so obviously there, there's a concern, share it with us so that we understand.
Yes. First off, here is a letter from a girl, Claire Clifton. She's in my grade. Her personal experiences, she couldn't come today because she had work. So that's her personal experiences, so she wanted to ask you her. Can I grab my phone real quick? Today's on the calendar.
Sure, you guys, yeah.
So, hi. Oh, if you guys don't know, I'm Leah Van Car. I'm here today because I've had a lot of problems these past two years with being bullied by the cheer coaches, which are also teachers, Kristi Disano and Erin Polly. And I honestly, I posted my senior speech that held my concerns on Facebook just to give myself some closure because I felt that I wanted to get my own personal story out. And I was ready to leave everything at that and walk away from this year and graduate and be happy until Mrs. Disano started speaking about me in class, which we have girls to testify that. And we also have a voice recording where she says my name twice to another student. And then she also slammed the door in my face of her classroom last Thursday. And I have a thousand views on my Facebook post with many comments, including from girls that have also said that they didn't quit the cheer team for no reason. And our, our program, I'm from eighty girls to twenty-three in one year. The coaches also invited these girls down here to come and speak against me. And like, to me, that's honestly very intimidating because I, I have a hard time believing this. Because these girls are my friends, so...
What are these coaches' names?
Kristi Disano and Erin Polly. They're also teachers here at the high school. I was going to have a long speech that like described my entire story in detail about all the things that have happened to me over the past two years. But I decided that it was better to come and just speak about this now. And I'd like to say that in Oxford Community Schools, bylaws and policies from the teachers, under the bullying topic, it says bullying rises to the level of unlawful harassment when one or more person systematically and chronologically inflicts physical hurt or psychological distress on one or more students or employees. And that bullying is based upon one or more protected classes that is characteristics that are protected by federal civil rights laws. Under that, I have highlighted the things that I have personally experienced. And one is intimidation because I have proof of the coaches going into class and pulling girls out of class to sign a petition that they were not bullied, which, I mean, yeah, because they didn't feel it like I did and like my friend Madison up there did and so many other girls did. And they have those girl, they have those coaches as teachers, so they can't come forward and speak for themselves. So I'm here and that's what that paper is, the letter that the one girl wrote. There are girls that are too afraid to come up and speak because they're afraid that their grade is going to get hurt. So I have intimidation for the girls that are here to talk against me. I have cyberbullying because there have been emails sent out about me and posts about me. And public humiliation because Erin Polly, this year at Cheer Camp, even though she is no longer a coach, she resigned, showed up to Cheer Camp, moved me to the back, and said it was because I wasn't supposed to be seen. And under harassment, I have highlighted, has the effect of substantially interfering with a student's educational performance, opportunities, or benefits or an employee's work performance. Today I had a meeting with Mr. Wolf and Mr. Ackerman. And honestly, after that meeting, I had a very hard time focusing in school because I didn't know what was going to happen tonight or what I was going to say. And like, it, it was really hard for me to think about everything that I've gone through. And then I also have in here sanctions and monitoring, if you would like to know what should happen if a teacher is harassing a student. So, other than that, pretty good.
Very good, thank you. Brave of you to even have this discussion, so thank you. Now, does, do your parents want to talk to you next?
Yeah.
Okay, please, please, let's do that.
Thank you, dear. So I am here really to follow up on a discussion that I had to, you know, when I spoke in front of the school board last about two years ago. And the issue I had two years ago was, was really the catalyst for what started, what we believe started the bullying of my daughter in the first place. That's not why I'm actually here to talk. But I spoke in front of all of you, not many of you may, may not have been here. But at that time, I had concerns because I've always been very active in the school. Our family's always been very active in the school. We've been here, I can't tell you the amount of hours we've been here. But, uh, so we feel that the community deserves the best coaches and the best, uh, and the, this athletes deserve the best coaches possible. So at the time, when we were select, selecting a new baseball coach, a new basketball coach, I believe there was something that happened with the soccer coach, we were going to select a new soccer coach. And we were also selecting new cheer coaches. Well, at the time, I knew of some of the other cheer coaches that were applying. And a couple of them, one in particular, had a resume that was, was tremendously huge. They had recommendations from, from people here in the school district, from teachers, from administrators, from other coaches, from parents, from students, from principals of other schools, from superintendents, all kinds of stuff that, personal recommendations, people that had taken all the safety classes, all the stuff that had happened. And then they, then we went and hired the cheer coaches that we had. And I had, I had no knowledge of them personally and had nothing against them at that time. But I spoke because as a parent, I would like to have the best coaches possible, have the most experience possible to keep, to coach my kids. Because it's, you spend so much time that I would feel that that's what we're looking for in, in, in a coach. So I was concerned because obviously it's not up to me to make a decision. But I was concerned that there was, seems to be a pattern of picking coaches for maybe personal or political reasons. And so we hired the coaches that we had. And I was concerned because they're, of their inexperience. And I was concerned that there may, may be actions taken because they don't know how to maybe handle being a head coach or a coach. They might, they don't know how to handle young kids, high school kids, stuff like that. They were, I think they were maybe assistant coaches somewhere else, but they obviously had not been around very long. And then to see the actions that had been taken and the, the breaking of, of rules and not being able to set agendas and all kinds of stuff that happened over the course of time. And then the personal issues that happened with Leah. And while I absolutely respect all the girls here, and I loved watching them all year, and I wish them nothing but the best. And, and I know that they're here to speak well of the coach, and that's terrific. But they didn't, they didn't experience what a lot of the other girls did experience. So bullies don't pick on everybody, they just pick on certain people. And there's, for all the girls that can speak about how great the coach is, there's a bunch of girls that speak about being bullied. And there's a bunch of them that will come forward as soon as they get the opportunity to. So I'm just concerned that we, that the board, that our new athletic director and our new principal, I guess they're not that new now, but I, I hope that they're, that they have great success. Because I feel that if they listen to more parents like me than spoke two years ago, and maybe we wouldn't... and maybe we wouldn't have some of these issues by at least having a proper oversight to the new coaches or new teachers or... Because a lot of it was gone completely unchecked. You know, like, I'm a business person, I've been a manager for years. If I hire a new manager or promote a new manager, I gotta go check up on them, make sure they're doing the right thing. And they weren't checked up on. They were just left to do anything they wanted to. And that included picking on the girls. And I went and spoke and went through all the proper procedures. I spoke to the coaches and I gave three weeks that you're supposed to. We spoke to them again, we spoke to athletic director again, we spoke to members of the administration. And we spoke maybe eight or nine times and spoke everything that we could. And now, apparently, we weren't believed. So now, here we are, a year later, and the cheer team went down, which actually, I have to correct something I told Mr. Wolf earlier. We didn't actually go from eighty, I thought that was the amount of girls in the program.
You have thirty seconds to reply, Mr. Van Car.
Okay, thank you. So we actually went from fifty-four girls down to twenty-three girls, so that's still quite a drop off of fifty percent. The fact that so many of those girls are not here anymore shows that I wasn't wrong. And that speaks enough in itself to show exactly what we want to improve of. So I just want what's best for the community, what's best for the girls going forward. So I hope that we can take steps to improve the way that our girls and boys are treated in the future.
Mr. Ackerman, thank you. Jeanne?
Hello, my name is Jeanne Van Car.
I'm Leah's mom, obviously. I just wanted to come up and talk a little bit about bullying in the classroom. You know, we are always worried about the kids bullying kids, which maybe sometimes teachers bullying kids is overlooked or maybe not known because when a child's in the classroom and they're being bullied, they have to be careful and not talk because they're already being bullied. So what do you think's gonna happen if they come to you and say they're being bullied by the person they're being bullied by? It's very, very, very hard. What do you think's gonna happen to their grade? What do you think, how do you think they feel? You have girls in the classroom right now that cheered before. There were twelve seniors that quit?
Yes.
Juniors and seniors?
Just seniors.
Oh, twelve seniors that quit the cheer. Those are all seniors that wanted to cheer in high school or in college. They wanted to graduate high school and cheer in college. But most of them walked because they were bullied. And the girls who have class with the bullies, it's very hard for them because they can't even come forward. A lot of them would love to come forward, but they're being called out right in the middle of class and asked questions and stuff. And some of them do come out. And you know, like Leah, Leah came out, she talked to you. I mean, Tim, and I believe Nancy is who we had went to last year. And we were promised an apology letter that we never got. We were promised that people would follow through and they did it. Which, what are you teaching the kids? You know, my daughter was bullied and then she came to you and she brought it to your attention and what happened? Nothing. My husband had a stroke in May. So we couldn't afford ten thousand dollars a year for Leah to cheer in a private cheer program. So I called the coaches. They hadn't even done camp yet. And I said, you know what, my husband had a stroke and we can't afford ten thousand dollars a year for Leah to cheer outside. Can she please come back to sideline? Even though she was bullied, she still wanted to cheer. And the coaches said, no, we don't have a spot for her. So Leah didn't get to cheer during sideline in her senior year because they didn't have a spot for her. So, I mean, it's amazing to me that Leah, when she tried out for cheer for competitive, last year, she was number one. She had the number one score, yet was never good enough to see the mat for round three. And it's not about playing time. It's about, if you have a good coach who cares about winning and about, you know, the kids and about the program, you're gonna put your best athletes out there. You're not gonna put eh, so-so athletes out there. And that's not what happened. My daughter scored number one, yet never found mat in round three. But anytime somebody needed to see a stunt or to fix their stunt, they would call my daughter up to show them how to stunt. And she would, she would go up there with a smile on her face and she'd show them. And then they'd make her go back and sit down. It's called test outs and that's how you get to be in a round. If you're on the sideline, you test out. My daughter tested out numerous times and she won every test out, yet never seen the mat. They'd say, oh, well, we changed our mind, so you're not in this week. So Leah would say, oh, okay, and she'd go back to the sideline. And she, like, if you look at any of the videos, you can hear Leah over the top of everyone else cheering. Tighten your butt, girls, come on, come on. Because when you're stunting and you have to tighten your buttocks in order to stay strong and stay tight. And you can hear Leah cheering them on and you can hear Leah over the top of everybody else, even though she's the best cheerleader and she's sitting on the sideline. So, on our third meeting at the ninth week, I asked the coaches. I said, obviously, you know, you guys are affected by something. Was it because my husband went and spoke in front of the board about coaching choices? And she admitted it. She flat out said, absolutely, we're affected by that. Really? You're gonna take it out on my sixteen-year-old daughter? And she was sixteen at the time, she's seventeen now.
Was that that said that?
That was Erin Polly.
Excuse me, about twenty more seconds to finish up.
Okay. So, I mean, it's just, it's crazy that they, teachers, become coaches and then they bully the kids in school. And they, I mean, check up on it. They pulled kids out of classes today? How did they get the kids' classes? It had to come from the teachers. I got texts that says, do you know that the teachers are asking the girls to send this and that? That's really bullying from the teacher. I mean, if you're a student and you're asked by a teacher to do something, you should do it, right? I would. Because you're a student, you're supposed to look up to those people. You're supposed to think of them as higher-ups. And for everybody to know, Mr. Wolf and Mr. Ackerman do have the video of the teacher talking about my daughter to another student. So that gives proof that, you know, she's violating codes and violating policies of Oxford High School.
Thank you, Mrs. Van Car.
Thank you.
Madison.
I'm Madison Patterson. I, to start off, I'm not here to talk about, I guess, bullying in classrooms, whatnot. I'm just here to tell you my experience in cheerleading. So.
It's okay. It's all right.
Okay, sorry. I'm a little emotional. So my freshman year, I made varsity cheerleading, which is not very common. I was good, I mean, you know, I was a good athlete in cheerleading. And so anyway, so I made varsity my freshman year and I stayed on it my sophomore year. And I was in all three rounds, every competitive season. My junior year for sideline, I took a break because honestly, cheerleading's very hard on your body. I had knee problems, shoulder problems, I just needed a break, so I didn't do sideline. I came back my junior for competitive and I didn't get put in any rounds, which I expected. I wasn't there for sideline, I wasn't there to prepare, and that's okay. But I asked the coaches at least once a week, please, can I show you what I can do? I would love to show you what I can do. And they were always, yeah, yeah, tomorrow, you can show us tomorrow what you can do. I never got the chance. I, so my freshman, sophomore year, I was a flyer. And I was put in front a lot, so I consider myself one of the better flyers freshman, sophomore year. So my junior year, when I asked, can I show you what I can do? They let me fly one time. It didn't go well, I had a season off. I wasn't in, you know, the shape to do it, which is fine. But I had one chance to do it and never a chance again after that, even though I asked multiple times. So I guess my side of me talking was just to say, the way that athletic, our cheerleading was set up at the time, it wasn't, you know, fair, I guess. And I understand, if, I'm not a good athlete and I'm not a good cheerleader. I understand if I can't be put into a round because I don't have the abilities, I understand that. But I never had the opportunity to show them. Even though I took a season off, I still can do what I used to do. I can still be in all three rounds. Like, I did my freshman and sophomore year on varsity. And yeah, I never got that chance. So anyway, my point is, I was treated unfairly. And I, of course, would have loved to do cheerleading my senior year. It was my goal since freshman year, being on varsity. I wanted to do all four years in varsity. And I absolutely, after being in no rounds my junior year, off to the side for, I mean, the four-hour practices we have every day, that's a lot of hours of not being able to do my homework. Trying to appease them and trying to show them I can do this, just give me the opportunity. And throughout the whole season, which is fairly long when you're not doing anything and not on the mat, I was never able to have that opportunity. So I didn't go back my senior year, which is this year. And so anyway, yeah, my thing is that I, just opportunity. I know sports are a great thing, I know they're competitive and I know you wanna be the best. But there's also a side of, we're in high school and we should be having fun and you should be able to show, to give these high schoolers the opportunity to show you what we're capable of. And so, anyway, yeah, so that's pretty much all I have.
Madison, thank you. Skylar.
Hi, everyone. First of all, I'd like to say that I was not invited by my cheer coaches to come and support ournas anyway at all. This was my doing and my coaches, or my team's doing. We took it upon ourselves, so.
What's your next name?
Anyard. And as far as the petition goes, I ran this myself, being one of the captains, I ran it. So it never made it in coaches' classrooms, so I don't know how they said that. It was passed out from coach to the other girls to sign. Because I handed this out to these members and past members of the team, myself, not coaches doing. Anyway, my name is Skylar Anyard and I was one of the captains of the varsity cheerleading team of this past season. I would like to start off by addressing the inaccuracy of the statements that Leah Van Car and her supporters are claiming. Leah has referred to our coach Christie Desano as a bully. The true definition of a bully, if you look this up, is a person who uses strength or power to harm or intimidate those who are weaker. In no way did Coach Christie Desano or Erin Polly apply to this definition during the 2017 competitive cheerleading season, or any season for that matter. During last year's early competitive season, Leah withheld one of the four flyer positions in round three. However, due to her lack of skill level and coachability, she was removed from that spot. Although, she still performed in the remaining two rounds. Due to the fact that Coach Christie and Erin did what was best for their team, Leah developed resentment upon them. So since when is doing what's in the team's best interest considered bullying? Coaches are hired to lead a team and during the time, they are going to be facing tough decisions. However, there is an appropriate way to express concerns when a decision is being made. Voicing disagreements during a team banquet is not the right forum. The night of our banquet was to celebrate the team as a whole, not one specific individual. But Leah Van Car and her mother chose to take the cohesive atmosphere and individualize it by addressing their selfish opinion that seniors should be the only ones entitled to captain. So not only does this diss Coach Christie, it also, this is me and the other junior for captain as well. The captain title is earned, not just given. In life, you aren't entitled to anything. Just because one may be a senior doesn't automatically make them a good leader. In order to become President of the United States, one has to be at least thirty-five years old. However, that doesn't mean every thirty-five-year-old should be that. One has to have the required qualities in order to earn that certain title. Despite all her complaints, including midway through last year's season, Leah came back for the year's competitive season. So if the coaches were truly bullying her, then why would she return? Through all of these selfish actions, I have never once heard Coach Christie badmouth her or physically abuse her. So my question is, how in any way did Coach Christie apply to the term of a bully? She gave up countless hours of her day, precious family time and money out of her own personal paycheck to support the girls on our team. She loves each and every one of us as one of her own and would never do anything to harm us mentally or physically. From a coaching standpoint, Coach Christie has done everything in her power to do what was best for the team. Bottom line is, Leah Van Car and all her supporters need to get their definitions straight. Coach Christie is not a bully. Her actions reflect upon those of a successful and responsible team coach. In fact, she led our team to regionals this season for the first time in three years. Please hear me out as I say this. Coach Christie Desano deserves nothing less than the position to coach your athletes as she chooses. Removing Coach Christie from the coaching staff would only hurt the cheer program, so why face something that's not programmed? Thank you.
Thank you, Skylar. So just to kind of get it pointed clear. No, not right now. Well, I just wanna, am I going on trial or? Let me address. Because I don't think that that's a problem. I haven't mentioned anyone's name. Hold on, hold on. Excuse me. Guys, we're doing fairly well. One of the things I just want to address. We gotta avoid, something obviously happened at a banquet that you didn't like. But we do not put, she's not on trial. We're talking, what I understand is we're talking about staff members who are coaching and we got some opinions about them. Let's keep it there, not about each other, right? Because at the end of the day, I don't want you attacking each other. We're talking about one subject right now and let's keep it on that one subject. Fair enough? All right. Brenna.
Hello. I'm Brenna Mauer, here to support the Oxford cheerleading program step. It's a coach's job. It is a coach's job to inspire and motivate and teach athletes to perform to their best ability. It is also a coach's job to make decisions that are right for the team. Coach Christie Desano and Erin Polly were two coaches that did everything a coach needs to do and more. They make difficult decisions, but they're decisions that needed to be made if we wanted to be the best at what we do. Take any basketball team or football team, they both have starting lineups. They're go-to people for the job. The coach made that decision of who would be a starting player and who would not be. Considering this, any of those players that were sitting in the bunch for the start never complained of bullying from the coach just because they weren't on the starting lineup. I was first, I was not in a round of competition last year, but I did not let that cause me to be infuriated with the coach. I was instead infuriating that myself. I knew that I had to work harder to get this position if I wanted it that badly and eventually did gain that position. I have been through extremely tough coaches since the age of four years old, including my swim coaches, gymnastics coaches and track coaches. All three of these sports have one thing in common, the idea of being coachable. Being coachable means accepting coaches' opinions and listening to their advice, not viewing it as harm or wrongdoing. If there's only one thing to take away from my words, I hope it is that it's not coaching that is a problem, is the athletes themselves. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Brenna Mauer.
Brenna Mauer.
Mr. DeSoto. If these are all, most of these statements that are written can maybe be presented to the superintendent and the athletic director. I think we've pretty much got just what's going on. And although we want to hear everybody's, if it's the same support or not support, we're not, I mean, we hired a superintendent as a board. Superintendent gets together with the principals and the athletic director and they flush this out. I think what we don't want to do is we don't want people to feel as though, I don't like a coach or I support a coach, I don't like a coach. Whatever your comments or thoughts about a coach, I'm just gonna run to the board and the board's gonna take care of it. I feel badly for everybody involved here, I really do. This elected body is to take care of the governing arm of our district, not the hiring and firing of a coach, whether it be a cheer coach, a teacher. not the hiring and firing of a coach, whether it be a cheer coach, a teacher. And if they've, if they've broken policy, that's something that the superintendent needs to address. This board is not responsible for the hiring and firing personnel. It really isn't. And if, if at any point we, this board has given anybody the indication otherwise, then we have done our job.
Understood. As I'm looking at it, we only have two other individuals that want to discuss this topic and we have one, one individual. So, so let's, I don't want anybody being here and not having the voice be heard.
Right, they all come to here, um, that it's supposed to be our open house and they fill the card and come and be heard in a public manner. So are you?
But we also, we also have the point that if a topic is redundant and you get the same conversation over and over and over.
Yeah, I see where you're coming from.
I just, you know, we could be here, I've been in these meetings and we've been here for two, three hours.
Yeah.
With that, Addison.
Thank you.
Addison, would you, I asked you to do one other thing. Hold that. Hang in there.
First thing I want to say is that contrary to what certain individuals have said, we were not sent here, we were not asked to do any of this by any certain individual governing person. This was all us and what we felt was necessary in this situation. So anyway, so here's to what I have scripted. Hello, everyone. My name is Addison Christie Matts. I never thought I would have to do this, but in light of recent events, I must clear some things up about Coach Chrissy De Sano. We started off this cheer season in June of 2017 and from that point until this last week, Coach Chrissy was there for this team a hundred percent. Even with everything going on in her personal life, she kept this team her number one priority for the entire ten months we were together. She put everything she had into coaching this team only to have certain individuals accuse her of awful things like bullying and even abuse. Now, I don't know what happened last season. I wasn't there. But I do know one thing, and that is that it's never okay to publicly humiliate and tear down a person who has put everything they had into building up and supporting their team. And that act alone is more bullying than I have seen out of this program in the entire four years I have been a part of it. I also know that our coach has done an amazing job this season to make sure all of us felt nothing but her support and love the entire season during the hardest times and was proud of us no matter what the outcome. The notion that such a person could be responsible for such heinous things is completely ridiculous. And I firmly believe that coaches, not the reason many of the girls mentioned in a certain individual's speech, have left the program. In fact, one of them contacted me today and asked me, one of the girls that was written in this speech as a person who quit because of coach, she contacted me and asked me if she would sign the petition, if I would sign the petition to say that coach didn't do this. But I stand here on behalf of everyone that has gotten to know what an amazing person Chrissy De Sano is as a coach, as a teacher, as a mentor, and as a friend. I cannot think of a single person who could have handled the crazy things thrown at the varsity cheer team this season better than she did. Coach Chrissy is the best thing to happen to this program in a very, very long time and the thought of losing such a vital person from this program is unthinkable. And I firmly believe that there is no one who could do their job better than she can. So please, I urge you to take this in account. Thank you all for your time.
Addison, thank you. Angela.
Hi, good evening. That's my daughter Addison. My name is Angela Matts. I'm here to discuss mostly the topic of bullying. I've been an advocate for a fair share of individuals regarding bullying between my professional and personal life. It is not acceptable. I have taught my children to speak up for themselves and I have zero tolerance for bullies and I intervene swiftly using a respectful chain of command in hopes of resolve. This, however, is a first. Many are so quick to assume bullying is defined or limited to a peer-on-peer or an adult in an authoritative position towards someone younger. This is something that I never thought we'd have to sit here and support all of our daughters who are trying to stand up for a coach that has supported them a hundred percent. And, um, this is an example of a coach being bullied by a student athlete. None of you were there, but at this banquet, what happened? No human being. No one should be publicly shamed in the manner in which Coach Chrissy De Sano was at her athletes banquet award. This should have been a celebration, especially by an athlete, by an athlete who took an oath to represent Oxford High School and our community in a positive manner. And it doesn't, and it didn't stop there. And it continues to be shared on Facebook and Instagram and shared and shared again. And this isn't just affecting and impacting the student.
Address the board.
Yes, I'm sorry. And this isn't just.
I just don't want it to get personal.
Yep, that's okay. And this isn't just affecting, um, the original speech of whom gave it to. Now it is affecting a whole team because now this is defaming the character of the program that sixteen other students love dearly and protect dearly. And now, over a thousand times, their program's character is being defamed all over social media, which is cyberbullying in and of itself. As a mother staying here today, um, I can't tell you whether my daughter will return next year or not. Um, and it has nothing to do with the coaching. It has, it's just personal things. She absolutely, um, loves her team, loves everything about it. We were not asked to be here, but regardless of the outcome, we are a hundred percent, um, in support of everything that happened this year. It has been a hundred percent really wild ride of a season of things that happened between the Oxford-Varsity cheer this year and the things for these girls to have to endure. You have to be a phenomenal leader to get through and to get these girls, even to make it day by day by day, get alone to get them to regionals.
Thank you so much.
One more card came in on this subject. Um, Allison.
Hello, my name is Allison Zaris and I'm actually going to give you my speech.
All right.
So I actually have a speech open now and to say good things about Coach Chrissy because she is the kindest person I've ever met. But I got here and I was like, you know what, I'm not going to say any of that. So I actually came into this team late. I was on the sideline team, but I decided not to do competitive because I wanted to focus on grades, not because I was bullied. Um, so I was focusing on my grades and I realized I really miss cheer. So Coach came up to me and she was like, well, I just lost a girl. If you would like to try out, I will give you the opportunity to try out. I came to practice that day with no cheer clothes. I tried out and she goes, I'll put you on the team, but you have to work for your spots on every round. I worked for all of those spots and I ended up in all three rounds. I didn't have a tuck at the beginning of the season. I got a tuck and I got all the other skills I could ever ask for. Coach has also been there for me through academics. I had trouble in school for one class. I know I failed the test. And I was like, Coach, I need to sit out this one practice so I can study for my next one. And she goes, go ahead. You need to get your grades up. Coach Chrissy has never bullied me or any of the girls that I've seen. I know I haven't been on the varsity team since freshman year. I'm only a two-year cheerleader, but I can only say good things about Coach. I don't want to drag on, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you.
With that issue, um, thank you for coming and sharing both sides. I've taken notes and I know all the board members have taken notes and, um, it's not to be thrown out and bantered right now today. There are things we need to get caught up with. There's questions with, that we have to ask. And so, um, let us now do what we have to do. Because I want to do that right now in, in, in front of you. But we have another individual that would like to talk about the Lighthouse Connections Academy. Lynn?
Lynn and Liz left me with a written statement that I could just share with the board. They're two of the board members that voted in tonight for the Lighthouse Connections Academy. They weren't able to stay due to some child.
Oh, okay. All right.
I'll show their statement with you at another time.
All right. All right, we've looked at the scheduled activities while the cards were being filled out. Um, clarifications.
I normally don't, uh, speak after any public comment for a number of reasons, but I think the only thing that I'd really like to say tonight is I do appreciate especially all of the students who were willing to come forward and, um, and share your thoughts. Yeah, I'm sure that we'll have many more discussions in the days to come, but, uh, it, it does take a lot of intestinal fortitude to sometimes, um, share things that, that are deeply personal. And so, um, I want you to know from myself personally, I, I appreciate every one of you who came and spoke tonight. And, uh, I am sure that, uh, our team will follow up in the days ahead.
Any other clarifications?
No.
All right, final, uh, board comments. Uh, Mr. De Alessandro, how about we start with you?
Okay. I said earlier to Tim and Chuchu, um, as far as the international program, and the entire team, Jill, and you, Janet, from all of perspective, I'm very appreciative of the direction that we're going. So I look forward to hearing how we're even making it go further in the near future. We heard a lot from a lot of, um, from a couple of parents and as Superintendent Throne said, from some students as well. As this board lets Superintendent Throne, Mr. Wolf and Mr. Appen work through it, I'm going to leave the students with this. High school should be a wonderful time and sometimes it's not always that. I hope that either side of this that you're on, the young ladies, that you treat each other well. Oftentimes when we, we see on television, even in our own lives, adults, when they don't agree with one another, they just yell at each other and they treat people bad and they call each other names. And I hope that doesn't happen with you all. I think the best thing that you can do is your very best to move forward. It's not always easy. Believe me, I know it's not easy. But the test of your character and who you become as young ladies, this is a defining moment. So please think about what you do moving forward. Okay? That's all I have.
Thank you. Mrs. Governor.
Thank you to Jill and Chuchu for a great presentation. I'm excited about the, uh, the international program and I want to echo what Dan said. Actually, it every way, so I won't spend much time. Remember that stress, the definition of stress is it's a physical response that we're supposed to have and have had since man was created, woman, to a perception of a threat or danger. And you do hold some control around what you respond to and how you respond. I think if each one of us remembers to own their response and think before responding, we may end up with different results. Um, but I think that it's important just to kind of break it down and remember what's happening in the moment. A lot of times it can just have to do with perception and body's response. So, um, I, I just want to take that back to what Dan said. Be kind. Kindness matters. So I think we all should remember that. In this instance and in every instance, what you do matters and you'll leave a trail. So keep that in mind and like time to do our job too. Thank you so much for coming out and sharing your opinions. I agree completely that this is the time for that. We are here for that and we heard you, all of you.
Thank you. Dr. Brazington.
Sure. Um, just again, thank you for the international program update. I just think it's a great reminder to this board and to future board members how important that whole checks and balance system is. Um, because this truly is a reboot from where we were probably four or five years ago. And had not been for the action of some certain board members or the public outcry, we could be in a whole different direction that we wouldn't want to be in. So I just think it's really important as new things are brought up that we don't always just say, okay, we'll think about it, we do our research, we do a checks and balance because every idea is not always a great idea. So I just really appreciate the reboot and I think it was definitely necessary and looking forward to how it impacts the high school in a positive way. Um, I think the first example is that is Lighthouse Connection. I didn't really understand the word charter school and over the last couple of months through education by Tim and by Jill, I felt comfortable appearing and supporting that. But again, it's going to be that checks and balances, it work, does it not work? It's important that we as a board all keep an eye on that. And again, I just appreciate the students and the parents speaking tonight. And, um, I know what it's like to be bullied by adults and it's not fun. So whether or not it happened or didn't happen, um, it, it hurts. So, um, I thank you for speaking, all of you.
Thank you, Dr. Brazington. Ms. Schaefer?
I echo a lot of, um, what Dr. Brazington just said. Uh, one of the gentlemen that came up and spoke, one of our students from India that came up and spoke, said a new challenge means a new learning. So I think that, um, we can think about that in moving forward and with our international program. This is actually a real international program. And I, I never felt as, um, as just a community member that, that we did not, that we had an international program before. This is actually an international program. We are reaching out to multiple different programs, whether it be the VIP program, the virtual national program, you know, married to the youth program. This is a real program. So I am super proud of that and I am super proud of the two of you ladies over there. I know that you've been putting in a lot of hours to this along with Janet. This is a real international program. So if we're going to sign our name on the dotted line that we have one, this is, this is it for me. Um, the last one was not. So this is, this is in the right direction and I appreciate your time and your effort. I'm not going to make a ton of comments other than thanking everybody for coming to speak to us tonight. I know it's difficult. Um, whether it's necessarily our job to hire and hire people, which it really is not, um, that goes in the hands of our superintendent and his staff. However, um, as a board member, um, as a servant of the public, I will be, I will be very interested into finding out more about this. Bullying is not to be tolerated at any level. Um, so I will, um, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Mr. Steppich.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I echo a lot of the statements that are made about the new direction of the international program and, um, um, I've had the opportunity to have both those gentlemen in my house several times and, uh, they're phenomenal. They really are. And to see them get up here was really exciting for me. In fact, the second gentleman that spoke in honor, I had the opportunity to host his parents on a couple of. parents on a couple of occasions at my house, in fact, they stayed there for a week while I was in Florida. That's how comfortable, when they came in the fall, they stayed with us. And they're just wonderful, wonderful, wonderful people to have, to really develop the Indian program even more would just be phenomenal, because these kids have such a high, high, high character, it just blew my life and I away, really did. And their parents, and the director of the program, who also stayed with us back in the fall, while we were going through, it was just great, and so to see what you guys are doing, and I know it's hard work too, you know, so keep it up, real interested in that. By nature, I'm a public speaker, and so I know how difficult it is to get up in front of a crowd when you have something that's very passionate to your very core, and so I really appreciate all you ladies and parents, given your comments tonight, and I have, and I think this whole board does have full faith in, in Mr. Throne here, to give this thing the full necessary attention that it deserves through Mr. Wolf, Mr. Ackman, and whoever else needs to be involved, and I trust that it's the right thing, and so thank you very much for your passionate comments, very difficult, I understand that, my whole life is that, so I understand it, so thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Steppik. So, Mr. DeSandro, when you were the president of this board, would end the meeting by saying that it's a great day to be a Wellcat, today I'm proud to be a Wellcat, I gotta tell you. And to be proud in a tough situation, that makes a good day, that makes a good day. But I want to start with the international program. It's not easy to completely diversify and change the movement of a machine that's going in a certain direction, and you guys have done a tremendous job diversifying more countries involved, diversifying into the virtual side of things, it's just top-notch, it is excellent, it is excellent, and I just appreciate all of your work. Then, but right up against that, Jill, you are heavily involved in the Lighthouse, and how exciting this, this charter potentially is for us, and the hard work that you have done in this, just fantastic. Mr. Barna, soon to be spending some money, huh? Are you getting excited?
We need this in the district, absolutely.
That's good, you worked hard for this, and so it's good to see it start to unfold. To the parents and you students, I'm proud of you. In, in life, there are always going to be difficulties, and in life, there are always gonna be disagreements, and if we don't find a way to communicate through them, we're just finished. We have to find a way to work through them. I'm proud, that you, you could have probably said a lot of ugly things, and you chose not to, on both sides, thank you. It helps us hear the information that is most necessary. What I've heard is ranging from, we have an amazingly wonderful coach that's being treated unfairly, I've also heard that we have a coach that seems to be taking advantage of her position, and has maybe done some things and said some things in practice that has affected some students. I've heard parents say that maybe, just maybe, we didn't respond the way we should've, that maybe there, there, that there were things promised that didn't happen. I'm not being a judge of that today, I just want you to know I heard you, I heard you. And there will be discussions, there will be, it's gonna come full circle. As, as Mr. Throne and the, and the staff works at this, I just am proud of the way you handled it. So thank you, thank you for making this a good night, even though it's a tough situation, okay, truly. I think that's all I have.
So, in a similar vein, I was actually called earlier today by Elise Shire, the Oxford leader, and she asked me if I had heard about this national walkout and that kind of thing, and she asked me my opinion, and I shared with Elise that, yep, we, we know all about it, we've had numerous discussions with our administrators, for the middle school, the high school, various buildings, and, and I shared with Elise, the first and probably most important point that I wanted to get across to our administrators was that I never want our students to feel that you have to organize and do a mass walkout in order to get our attention or to be heard. And over the last few weeks, we've had numerous conversations, and we continue to have conversations with students about what happened tragically a few weeks ago in Florida. And I want to just share a few things that has happened that, that the public may not know. Our news broadcast team, for 17 days, they each day honored a separate victim, and they read their name, their birthday, their hobbies of that victim. The leadership team and mentor, mentorship students wrote letters of support to, to the students down in Florida, and in fact, they had created a banner in which many students put their name on there, and right before this meeting, Mr. Wolf informed me that we actually had received a response back from the school in Florida, thanking our students for the support that they have shown, and so, just like tonight, I guess what I'm saying is, I want our community to know that it, it doesn't take a walkout to get our attention, we don't have to scream and yell and, and do things inappropriately to be heard, we want to, we want to ensure that we have an environment where everyone feels safe to be heard, they can speak their opinion, but that, that we do it in a very professional and courteous way, and so, I appreciate everyone for, for doing that tonight.
Anything in other?
None.
Then, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.